We will now then begin our Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of Thursday, March 31st. I will note that all of our council is present. Item one on the agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, April the 4th council meeting, so please refer to that agenda. Mr. Luna.
Mayor, thank you very much. I wanted to invite Nana to come up and update council on the recent changes with A8A, A8B, and A8C, as far as that development, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
Good morning, Mayor, council. As we discussed this last week, after our discussion, we were waiting for few documents or final documents from the applicant. After the meeting on Thursday, the applicant really worked with the community and finished or completed all the outstanding documents that we're waiting for. And I'll go through the document. In addition, we did a follow-up meeting yesterday with the residents to really show them all the changes and the final documents that had been made. So in our discussion with the neighbors, after the planning zoning board, there were a couple of things, or there were a number of things that the neighbors had requested. One was looking at this building. These were the two buildings that are directly adjacent to the residential neighborhood. The residents requested the height to be reduced from three stories to two stories, and that led to reduction of 20 units. Each of them, each of the units was 26, and with reduction from two, I mean, three to two stories, the applicant basically lost or reduced it less to 16 in each of the buildings. So that's one of the changes or significant changes. In addition to that, the neighbors had requested a perimeter wall along Recker on this section, and the applicant agreed to construct the wall, which I have the elevations here. This is the perimeter wall. In our discussion with the neighbors, one of the things they requested is when the applicant submitted a final wall, they wanted, they wanted to see, or at least they recommended we incorporate some kind of decorative feature, so it's not a blank wall, it's more attractive to the design, and it should be well-integrated into the elevations and the commercial center. Another issue that we discussed was the parking. Initially, the applicant had proposed a parking ratio of 1.85, and as part of the discussion, the neighbors wanted to make sure that, we all know that hardly would there be an overflow to the adjacent residential, but without a measure, if there is a spill, it could affect that. So one of the things that the applicant agreed, and it's also a condition of approval, is to, after reducing the units in this, it increased the parking ratio. In addition to that, there is a condition of approval to have a shared parking agreement that if there is ever an overflow, the residents can park in the commercial spaces instead of that restriction that they cannot do so. So that is really, this is the perimeter wall. And another discussion that the neighbors had requested, or there was a discussion about drive-throughs because of some of the few, the challenges they have in across this Longbow Parkway, was to prohibit drive-throughs in the development. After discussing it with the applicant, the consensus that basically, or the compromise the applicant agreed to was to have a condition of approval, that there should be no drive-through along Recker, or, to better state it, if there is any modification to allow drive-through, there will be a modification that will go through the public hearing process. So if you look at the site plan right now, these two buildings are not designed to allow a drive-through, and that's the consent, well, that's the agreement from the developer's side. When we met with the neighbors, they still will prefer not to have any drive-through in the development at all. But right now, there is a condition that will prohibit, or at least not allow, drive-through along Recker. So in, these are really the changes the applicant and neighbors have all been really talking, or we've been coordinating with both the applicant and the neighbors. Another last thing that I want to stress out was, the neighbors also wanted to see the final building elevations before council vote on this item. So with that, we work with the applicant, and the elevations was reviewed by the Design Review Board in October, and they may recommend the changes. So some of the changes they made was to make sure that the multifamily integrates well in terms of the color palette, break-in elevations, and different parapet heights, to be consistent or compatible more with the commercial that the Design Review Board actually were excited to see. So with that, the applicant revised the elevations that had been shown to the Design Review Board, and this is the final elevations that addresses or reflects all the changes. The color palette is really integrated well with the commercial piece. You can see the break-in elevations, and then different parapet heights or variations, and then landscaping in front of the building as well. And just to add a few comments, I know Councilmember Luna had asked, in 2014, there was a discussion before the city council, there had been, not a formal submitter, but there was, there was a discussion about changing the whole Longbow PA Plan Area Development to allow residential. And the discussion with council was, the designation on it was Business Park, and the council believed that it was not right at that time to allow residential. One, couple of the discussion was to make sure there was strong coordination between Falcon Field, coordination with economic development before any consideration is given to allowing any residential. So this project started about two years ago, and we've had extensive involvement or discussion vote with Corinne from Falcon Field, Bill, and I have also been talking a lot. So we've been coordinating with them throughout the whole review process. So that's where, oh, and then another final thing is a good neighbor policy. One of the things the resident had asked was to require a good neighbor policy to ensure that, you know, they don't store, you know, storage in the balconies, especially on the side facing Recker. And there's also a restriction not to allow antennas and all the kind of things that would deplete the aesthetics of the elevation. So we do have the good neighbor policy that addresses that issue, and it's also a condition of approval. So that's why we stand and establish recommended approval with all the recommended changes.
Thank you, Nana. Thanks for the update. You really encapsulate everything we discussed within these past two weeks. The only thing I was going to ask, and I know RJ's here, there was concern about the egress leaving the property, whether their, the traffic flow on Recker, can, can we accommodate, can that road accommodate the flow of traffic as residents leave, as well as those are going to be going to the commercial area of it?
Excuse me, I'm a little sniffly this morning. My allergies are acting up. Mayor, members of council, we're very confident that both Longbow and Recker can handle the traffic generated by, by the apartments. With apartment-type development, the, the, the traffic's really spread out pretty well through the day, so we don't see any negative, negative impacts on either, either street.
I know there was concern about the median that's located on Recker Road. Is that going to be problematic with some of the foliage that's on there? Is that, is that something that you see?
I don't see any problems at all, in terms of access or site visibility or, or any issues with the project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, I know Corinne is here, so I was going to ask Corinne if she wouldn't mind speaking relative to Falcon Field. I know that when we have homes built in and around that area, there's issues as it relates to light noise, and how are we going to be dealing with that? Is that, do you anticipate that's going to be a problem with this development?
Well, obviously, the, the proposed development is in some proximity to, I'm sorry, Mayor, council members. The, the development is in close proximity to the airport, and that's why we've taken a very close look at it. The advantage of the discussions that we've been holding over the last several months have been beneficial in terms of the airport because of the fact that the development that is going to include the residential is actually not located in what you would call the direct approach pattern in and out of the airport. Now, that does not prohibit a pilot from deviating from that approach pattern, because once they take off, they can go whatever direction they want. The majority of the aircraft are not going to be flying directly over the residential property, and that was a major topic of discussion that we had as we were working with the developer.
Corinne, is that AO3 in terms of when we look at flight patterns? A, there's AO1, that's direct.
Right. Yeah, I mean, the reality of it is, is that what you may have more than anything is the occasional helicopter flying over.
Right.
Because they don't necessarily follow the direct flight patterns that a fixed wing would.
Great. Thank you, Corinne. Now, as far as the good neighbor policy, is that included in this? Let's, let's say a resident is, wants to voice a concern about flight, is that your, your good neighbor policy, or is that the developer's good neighbor policy?
Mayor, council, Councilmember Luna, the good neighbor policy is a condition of approval that is part of the zoning or the general plan amendment request. In addition, I also like to point out that because this is in the OA3, we have a condition of approval that requires noise attenuation measures when they submit for the building permit, so, and then review of the project by the FAA. So there, there are all these conditions that we typically include whenever a project is in close proximity to the airport.
And Nana, do you know whether the construction will mitigate any aircraft noise and external noise? Is that part of the, the construction?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, yes. So the noise attenuation measures, it has to be, the design of the walls and all that has to maintain a minimum decibels inside the building. So when they submit a building permit, that's one of the things building to review, or the architect has to demonstrate that those noise are mitigated to minimize the noise inside, inside the buildings.
And, and you also mentioned that it's going to be lowered on Recker Road. It was going to be three initially, it's been lowered to two, two stories. And the, and that was done because residents were concerned about potential residents living there were going to peer over the fence of Ridge View.
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, that's correct. The neighbors had expressed concerns that the three stories could lend itself to people being able to see the balconies of those residential homes. So that was why it was lowered to two stories.
Okay. Well, thank you. The only thing, you know, I know there's that sticking point about the drive-through, so hopefully we can work through that. I mean, ideally, having the commercial, having sit-down restaurants, everybody wants sit-down restaurants, especially in northeast Mesa, and I would certainly advocate for that, but I know that Mr. Anderson's working with developer, speaking to that, and I know the residents had concerns about the drive-throughs that are going to be located on the west side of that commercial development. So those, I think we, we've been successful in trying to meet the needs of the developer as well as the community, and really mainly the community, because this is in their, in their, in their neighborhoods, so. Okay. Thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Before we leave this zoning case, council, any questions for these folks? I, I just want to say that at the legislature right now, there's a push, or there has been talk about eliminating zoning requirements because of the housing shortage that we're experiencing, and how NIMBY neighborhoods will come in and, and prevent, you know, cities from being able to develop housing because they're empowered by the zoning process, and that's the cause, one of the causes of our, of our housing shortage. I disagree with that 100%, and I think this is a great case study as, as to why zoning is important and that there's a use in, in zoning. Kudos to Mr. Luna for working so closely with this large group of neighbors that was, had reasonable concerns about having a large apartment complex built across the street from them. And, and I happened to bump into them prior to a meeting yesterday, and I paid them a compliment and pointed out all of the great things that they've accomplished by coming to the city and expressing these concerns, and that didn't kill the project. We, we still are going to be creating hundreds of new housing units that are much needed in, in our community, but issues like parking, and good neighbor policy, and changing the elevations so that they're more attractive and that they respect the privacy of their neighbors, adding the wall, establishing policies about the drive-throughs, making more attractive elevations, all of these things happen. This, this project is much improved because of the neighborhood involvement and Mr. Luna's vigorous representation of that neighborhood. So I, I just want to point that, point out that zoning is not a bad thing. Zoning doesn't kill housing. Zoning makes housing better. And so I, I'm looking forward to supporting this, but I also want to say congratulations to the neighbors for getting involved and making this a better project. So, okay, thank you very much. Council, we're still reviewing our Monday night agenda. The zoning case we were just talking about right now is the only thing that's off with the consent agenda. Is there anything else on that agenda that you'd like additional presentations on or information on? If not, we, we do still have a full agenda for the rest of this meeting, so we'll keep plowing through. The next item on our agenda is item 2A. It's a presentation on the fiscal year 2022-23 summary of the proposed budget. Welcome, Brian and Linda.
Hi, good morning.
Morning, Mayor and council. Brian Richel, Assistant Director for the Office of Management and Budget. And alongside of me, I've got Linda Jones, who is the Operations Coordinator, Budget Operations Coordinator for the Office of Management and Budget. So this presentation is kind of an overview of the fiscal year 22-23 budget, and it kicks off, as most of you are familiar, our month-long department presentations to council, which will begin here shortly on Monday. So with that, we'll get into this one. We're an annual budget, kind of a reminder, an annual budget. We adopt, the city of Mesa adopts a budget each year as required to, to appropriate annual expenditure budget and the secondary property tax levy. Annual budget sets the maximum expenditure limit for each year, and then also, a balanced budget means that total resources available to the city must be sufficient to cover budgeted expenses. So in going, in doing that, here's our general governmental funds principles, financial principles that we follow when we're looking at the budget each year. Just to kind of briefly go through, balanced net sources and uses. What we try to do in the five-year forecast is keep a 10% to 15% reserve balance, a fund balance. Also, sustainability of programs and services, and then also keep wages and benefits competitive, and also invest in capital and life cycle replacement. And we keep all five of these in, in our minds when we're going through the budget and working with the departments. And you'll kind of see a, a, a theme for this year's budget is sustained quality services. So the 23, 22-23 proposed budget focuses on sustaining quality services, but also addressing the impacts of increased labor costs, higher-than-normal inflation on commodity services and contracts, and then also growth pressures with the growth of accounts, and also with the housing and with the commercial coming in, those type of growth pressures. And then also, what we have in the budget too, a consideration, is the Mesa Climate Action Plan. So kind of, so in the current workforce environment, working on retaining, retaining and recruitment of quality employees, this kind of, some of them are kind of a recap of what we presented previously, but to retain and recruit quality employees to the city, previously in July of '21 of this current fiscal year, up to a 3% pay increase, step increase, was for all eligible employees. Also, this January, a $2,000 one-time gross pay for full-time employees, and part-time employees got a reduced amount. And then also, a 5% market adjustment and salary increase was done for all city employees. So in this July, for coming up in '22, part of the 22-23 budget, we have an, up to a 4% step pay increase for all eligible employees. And also included in this budget to cut, to, to retain employees also is we created, the city created a centralized commercial motor vehicle safety unit, which is responsible for citywide administration education and training for all of the Department of Transportation, CMV programs. And what we did is added three staff to centralize that. It's, it's been decentralized in most of the departments, so what we're trying to do is bring it together and have administrated, because we do have a lot of commercial driver's license out there with all the heavy equipment that the city has. Then also what we're doing is, we're evaluating, staff is evaluating to continue, or to continue to evaluate in January, this coming up January of '23, another one-time gross pay for employees. So we're still evaluating that. It is not in the budget, but wanted to give a heads up that we're still evaluating that. So wanted to give you a recap of the positions added during this current fiscal year for '21-22, and as you see, the first category is heavily on the, the public safety. The first two bullet points are contract services that we have with the town of Queen Creek for the 911 call takers and dispatch, but then also with the Tempe and Queen Creek Forensics Labs. We added that this fiscal year. Also, what we added was four full-time employees for the Real-Time Crime Center. And then also, moving on down, we've done a, a police officer for a homeless liaison, and then support for the transport, and also three more medical billers for the transport program. In some of the other areas of the city, we added an assistant city attorney to help more with the workload that's coming on with the agreements, especially with the utilities. And then we added another park ranger, so now we have a total of 12 park rangers in the city that, that go throughout, so. And then we also added a public ser, services worker and a planning division manager. So those are the positions, the major positions that we have added this current fiscal year. So moving on to the proposed budget for '22-23, focusing on the police department, what's in the proposed budget is 14 new sworn officers funded by the public safety sales tax, and to support the, to support the department, five civilians will also, is also part of the budget. And then what is also, what we included is seven full-time positions for the records division. This will help improve the turnaround time in processing police records requests. Right now, there's a significant backlog in it, so we've added more staff to help reduce that backlog. And then also, what is added is a psychologist position to help them, to provide mental health expertise to the mental wellness program of the police department. So that is also added in the, in the budget. So continuing on, the city has, is looking to create a specialized court, a domestic violence court, and what this is hoping to do is reduce citizism, also provide greater accountability, and evaluate and refer for other services as needed. So this will be a, a new specialized court. And I, as I, as I mentioned, these, these are kind of overview, so each department will come up and present a little more detail on this, so when the police department comes up next Thursday, the court will also come up and, and present with this in more detail. So what we've added also is positions, two positions for this court, is, one is a probation monitoring officer, and also a program assistant to help, help out. So keeping with the public safety, what's also included are, in the budget is the academies and training. So for police, there are three academies budgeted for this coming up fiscal year, which is, which will include about 110 recruits, and you, and there's usually about 77 graduates. So this is to help with the vacancies and with the, the turnover that, that happens with retirements and, and others, and so.
And adding additional.
And adding additional, yes. And adding additional positions to it. So the next one is on fire. We do include a, a fire academy. The fire academy includes actually four-day recruits. This is larger than their normal. What we have in there is 12 recruits for Station 222, and also 28 recruits just to fill any vacancies that they have.
Excuse me, Brian. Yes?
During our strategic planning, we talked about these, help me mark, with the, the units that are not the fire stations, but they're the mobile units to respond to medical. So are we including any provision to expand that within this next budget?
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor Duff, is we are continuing to have conversations on our civilian medical group that we're working on, and really, we, and the conversations we're having today, we have civilian medical personnel who do the transports, so we're also thinking about how that we can expand the role that they play. So we already hire EMTs and paramedics that are civilian to do transports. So we're having, we're having ongoing discussions with the police, or sorry, Fire Department, We don't know how many positions will be. We will bring it to council. We're still working through kind of those details. If it's not in time for the budget, we'll allocate some dollars, and we, we just want to make, we get it right. And there's been a lot of conversations and people about how this is going to work, but the reality is, we do have civilian medical personnel today on staff, and they need a career path also. And so we think that we can use the transport as an opportunity to get that experience so that the fire department is comfortable, that civilian medical personnel can integrate well into their operations. But we're, we need to work through that. This is a little different for some, and so they're a little uncomfortable, and you've been approached by that, and we're trying to do a pilot program, Mr. Freeman, and so we make sure that it's a pilot program, it's not intended to be scaled up for the whole city. We're not trying to convert everything to civilian, but we do think there is a role for it. So we just need a little time to keep working through the details. We just met this past week on some ideas from the Fire Department, they've come up with some interesting ideas, but we will do the program. I'm not going to suggest it needs to be part of this budget, but we can do it after, we approve the budget, we can come back to council and talk about it.
So the next slide, kind of meeting community needs and growth with the amount of building permits and development activity that has been happening around, in the city of Mesa, around downtown, but also in the southeast. Part of the 22-23 budget is the general plan update. We've also added a permit tech position and also a plans examiner supervisor due to the, the increase in activity. Also, what the city is looking at is a, a number of special events have increased over the past year, and this is special events, I mean by cities, like city-sponsored or city helped out with, with the special events. And so what we're doing to support the increase of all the special events that are happening throughout the city is creating a special events coordination staff. And right now, we have some full-time FTEs for that, but we're still evaluating that and seeing what the, what the impact will be and the proper staff would be to, to coordinate those special events.
Mayor and council, this is, this is becoming overwhelming task for staff throughout our organization, whether it's police, transportation, parks. So not only are we going to create a special events staff, because now it's kind of spread around the city in different departments, but we're also going to come to council with policies. We, we can't do all requests for all events, and I think we're, we need help in managing the expectations of how much we can allocate as far as resources, and so we need to work on, we're going to, one, we need to do internally, we need to create the staff for it, but we also need establish some policies about kind of the limitations about how many special events, not just the ones we sponsor, but the ones we support throughout the city. And so it's, because it's pulling staff in so many different directions, and it's pulling us off of our core, you know, services that we do, when we take transportation off, it's hard to get now police officers even to work off-duty. We're going to have to pull in officers outside the city just for the Easter pageant, because we just, there's just so much going on. We don't have that. So we're going to, when we bring to you this budget item, it's also going to be a, I guess, policy, maybe direction on the thoughts about special events. We love special events to a point, so.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, and also, as I brought in the strategic planning, I think some of the impact on, internally on special events is when someone is trying to get through the process, and they're reaching difficulties, and so it takes quite a bit of staff and council, you know, to solve the issue. So streamlining the process for the special events, so the, a simpler application and don't require so much management just to get it processed.
Yeah, and we can do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and we'll do that. But our, I guess our hesitation is when it requires, impacts traffic, or it requires police officers, it will, is, that's what we need to talk about. And maybe the policy upfront will help us deal with some of those applications, and we can simplify the, the ones that don't need a lot of. can simplify the ones that don't need a lot of support from the city, but the ones that do, we can, we can have clear policy on how we're going to manage those. But you're you're right, that's all part of this discussion.
Yeah, I I look forward to that discussion. This is a good, this is a problem that we aspired to have, isn't it? I mean, to have a city that's so active and so many venues and so much, such a demand for events that that we have to deal with that. So it is a problem, but it's a good problem, and I'm looking forward to having a generous policy that so that we, you know, quality of life, that we we've created all this infrastructure for quality of life projects, to the extent we can accommodate them, we need.
Right, it's just sometimes the outside groups that are coming in and doing fundraisers and runs and things like that can put a lot of strain on us. So we just need to talk about that.
I agree.
One more question on that. So as far as security requirements for special events, is that something that we create that ratio or create?
Yes.
Or I didn't know if there's other?
Yeah, it's it's both, it's
Okay.
public safety, it's transportation, it's just park staff cleaning up, having someone there during the, if they're in our park and making sure we're making sure our assets of our park are not, you know, they're being taken care of. So all those are all the all of the above.
So on the security part, there we dictate our own ratio or what we need, the security needs are, or there are other regulatory institutions like the state or federal?
Oh, I think most of the time it's probably us, our police department saying, if you're going to, how many, how many people do you expect to come? We need to probably have so many people, police officers here for each, whatever, 1,000 or whatever they are expecting.
So we rank?
So we would do that. Yeah, we have a police, I was lieutenant or someone in the police department who does ask their assignment as special events. And so they, the policy of the police department, and they kind of have the ratio of what the coverage needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
So the next slide with the with the growth of the infrastructure in the streets and the growth within the city, it also, we're investing in the transportation department because of that that growth. We increased street maintenance and preservation program. So what the city has done is increased the street overlay budget by $10 million to help out with that, to keep that going with street overlays. In addition, a two equipment operators have been added along with two field workers to help out with the maintenance and preservation programs. And then also we've added two field workers for increased alleyway and graffiti cleanup. And then also with other transportation programs, we've also included two traffic barricade coordinators, ITS technician, and then also a contract specialist for all the landscaping that the transportation does and the media does and things like.
Brian, Mr. Thompson has a question.
I have a question on with our overlay and our our street preservation programs, don't we contract a majority of that out, Chris?
Yeah, we actually, by state law, there, and I can't, I can't believe what the percentage is, that we're required to, a certain percentage has to be contracted out and we do a smaller portion in-house. We're not suggesting changing that. What we're actually doing is proposing to double the budget for street overlays, just you know, just like the general fund sales tax is doing well, we have a sales tax on transportation. And if we've looked at the forecast for sales tax, we we believe this is the time and, you know, even though we're doubling the budget, we're not probably going to be able to double the number of lay miles because it is just, you know, the cost of the asphalt is going to be much more expensive. But we just felt like it's it's time for us to, you know, go bigger with or go put in a lot more investment in our overlay, so that's the plan.
I guess my only concern is adding adding more of the full-time employees because, you know, listening to the economists, there's a recession, a recession right around the corner. They're anticipating with the inflation the way it is and with the with the the market the way it's acting. And I don't want to get into an an issue where we're too top-heavy or too too employee-heavy and then we have to start having layoffs if we have the ability to contract or outsource.
Again, we we do that. We already have that as a part of the, is part of the program.
Mayor, council member, if you were to look at the transportation budget, what you'll see is unlike some other departments, most of our budget actually goes to services. We have a pretty lean staff, in my opinion. I would say about a third of our budget right now is going towards people. The other two-thirds of it are going towards materials that are in-house folks use as well as contracts. So there's two things going on in what we're asking for. The 10 million is really part of the capital program or the lifecycle program for street overlays. That will all be done by contractors. The addition of of staff is actually the total cost increase is less than a million dollars. So you can see in terms of the how it weighs out, that the vast majority of what we're seeking in, you know, budget additions is going to contract work. But as our inventory gets older, we need more staff to do the day-to-day maintenance, and that's what
That's what we're sorry.
help us do. But even within our operations group, we still contract out a significant amount of our work.
Okay, thank you.
And to add to that, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we do forecast, the forecast that we do, we do include a market correction slash recession in the forecast. And right now we have it happening in fiscal year 2324, which is what the economists are thinking of right now.
So that's built in. So when we add positions, we look at being able to sustain them throughout that period.
So and that's with all the funds. So the general governmental fund, the utility fund, and even the transportation funds, we put that in there.
Mr. Ready, a quick question on the amount of miles on the overlay, what's the current one, the current miles and then with the?
So we had this conversation yesterday and RJ still owes me lane miles, so did you get the answer since we last talked? Okay, we owe that to you, so good. See?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember, we're putting together a history of how many lane miles we've done. We've got to work with Bethunean's staff because there's overlap from year to year in terms of how the funds are spent, so I'm trying to line up to make sure I'm giving you good numbers.
Sometimes dollars will roll over into the next year, so he's got to track that dollar with that. We we don't want to double count.
Exactly. And I saw some up and down in the numbers. So as of meeting with Mr. Brady yesterday, and he asked the very same question, I wasn't confident, and I want to make sure I'm giving you accurate numbers, so.
When you bring your
I'll have that for Monday.
So he has a presentation come up, we can get that to you.
Perfect. I'll bring that to you Monday evening.
Perfect, thank you. I think it's important to highlight the the work that y'all do. You know, roads are an important asset to to our residents and they they let us know when they're bad, right? So but we also want to let them know when, you know, the work that we're all doing at the city to to improve our road, so.
Real quick, back to Councilmember Thompson's comment, one of the things we actually talked about, that if there is a shift in the economy and for some reason, you know, sales tax collections go down, which we rely very heavily on, because the vast majority of what we're asking for is in contracts, those can, if we need to, hope not, can be scaled back pretty
So the next slide we're is investing in transit. So with the, what we're looking to do is increase the options and enhance the experience of transit throughout the city. So included in the budget is also is a Fiesta Buzz Neighborhood Circulator Pilot Program for the Fiesta District, also the master plan development for transit, and then 14 bus stop shelters for design and construction. And then also what's included is the streetcar extension feasibility study.
Mr. Thompson.
Chris, can we make sure when we start, when we start talking about the bus stop shelters, the design and construction of those, can we make sure we're working with PD as well? Because they have some great ideas on how to keep the homeless from from occupying the the bus shelters and becoming sleeping quarters for the homeless.
Sure.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned before?
Excuse me, Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry. While we were talking about bus stop shelters, these are new bus stop shelters? Are they improving other ones? Are they doing shade in one?
So, is Jody here? So we, in the, we started this a couple years ago. Council talked about taking existing bus stops and putting shelters in where we do, I mean, we have the bus, we're not adding more stops, it's going to the stops that don't have shade. And and that, and Jody and her group went through and prioritized throughout the whole city, all those stops and where we, and we did, I can't remember the number, we started a group of those a couple of years ago and we've, this is the continuation of adding more stops with the shade and and identifying the most utilized stops and prioritizing those first. So this is just a continuation of that program.
Great, so it's just enhancing existing bus stops that mean not?
Yeah, we're not adding more.
Humanity like shade.
Yes, exactly.
And on the master plan development for transit, do we overlay that or anything with any the micro transit that we're networks we're trying to?
When Jody comes to present, she can talk about that, but yeah, it's all that integrating in and then we're doing this too, so that it feeds into the general plan amendment also.
Okay, and then last question on the streetcar extension feasibility study, received the grant like $940,000 or something like that. Do we have a financial obligation as well?
That's what this is suggesting is the grant plus the 230,000.
230,000, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So as mentioned before, one of the big focuses for the city is the Mesa Climate Action Plan. And to promote that, the city has set aside $10 million in this coming up fiscal year 2223's budget for those for those projects. We also worked with the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department in creating a scoring criteria to prioritize those projects. And then also some of the examples of projects that we do have in that scoring is the electric vehicle charging stations and master plan, along with the solar energy, some of the solar for parking and things like that. And then also what's in there is the streetlight conversions to LEDs.
Right, I have one.
Please.
On the streetlight conversions to LED, we've been in this process for a while and as we needed to replace it, then we've been doing, working on that. So is this item on the presentation accelerating the program, continuing the program? How much emphasis are we putting on within the climate action plan?
I don't think I'm going to need to do my budget presentation.
I think you already have your 10,000 steps.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, great question. We are about halfway through the conversion of our 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 streetlights from the old technology to LED. You may recall a couple of years back, we came to council with a streetlight master plan and we weighed hiring a contractor to do our conversion using in-house staff and we feel we can literally save millions by doing it in-house. It's a seven-year program. We're about halfway through and we're actually ahead of schedule right now.
I do think I need to clarify, though, that the streetlight conversions will not net out from the 10 million. That is, that is separately funded by the transportation sales tax. So it will not be, we just, we want to take credit for it under the climate action plan, but we're not, it will not be part of the $10 million pot of dollars.
Okay, so we're continuing as planned, not accelerating the plan and creating a financial?
Right, because really this crews are, we've got, how many crews that are just out there doing?
We've got, I think, eight streetlight employees and or 10, somewhere in that range. And they're, in addition to their normal day-to-day work, they're going through neighborhoods, you know, and it's a little bit proactive. It's also a little bit when we get an outage complaint, rather than fixing a light, we'll go into a whole neighborhood and upgrade all the lights. But we are well ahead of of, I should say well ahead, we are ahead of schedule right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just say that makes a lot of sense to me. Every time I go to a national convention of any variety, I'm handed like 10 cards, you know, as I walk from meeting to meeting from by companies that want to do the LED conversions for our city. So there must be a real margin there, you know, because that's a, it makes sense that if we do that in-house, there's probably millions of dollars to be saved.
Yes, Mayor, it's different from state to state, you know. But yes, we had a lot of people coming wanting to basically buy the streetlights and have us rent them back from them. We looked at a whole series of models and with the rate structure that we have with SRPs, since that's the bulk of the city, it just made sense for us to do the work ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a good program, so.
Good to hear. Mr. Thompson.
My only question on on the streetlight conversions, I've noticed that because the, you know, the old, the old style bulbs throw out a lot of light, whereas the LEDs are really focused. So in between your standard lights now, you have these dark spots within neighborhoods between lights. Are we going to address that at all or are we just going to wait until somebody asks? Because there's no way we can just go out and set more streetlights out there, but.
Well, it's an interesting dilemma. We have some neighbors who want less and some that want more, so it's never sure.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, you know, in Councilmember Luna's district, he knows well, we had a meeting maybe three years ago and I had to be the one to stand up and tell folks we were converting the lights. And I would say anything more than zero light was too much light for some folks in the city. But on the other hand, another part of the city, once people see one LED light go up, they want to know when their street's being done, so.
One thing about LED that it does is it just creates a crisper look too. So while you're right, there may be, it doesn't maybe spread, maybe we can work on that a little bit.
We actually hope that we would eliminate dark spots by going to LED because the the diodes are directional in terms of how they cast the light. If you've got an area, I mean, part of the study, we did a lot of analysis to make sure that, you know, because to your point, we're not adding poles, you know, we're just replacing fixtures like for like, but if you have areas you think there's concerns, we can go in and determine if we do need to add lights, so.
It'd be interesting to do like a comparison, right, of of how many lumens are out there with a standard and then after we replace them, go back through and measure it again, because that'll tell you where those dark dark spots are. And I think there's some neighborhoods we probably, and especially PD, would probably want those lit up pretty well.
Yeah, and we had PD wildfire involved when we were doing some of our pilot testing, you know, especially along Ellsworth, where we tested dimming and we wanted to make sure that the public safety folks were comfortable with with what we're doing. We're happy to go back, you know, and and take a look. It's it's interesting, sorry, I don't, we're getting too far on a tangent. Some people think the lights are actually brighter and they're not, that the color's different of the light.
Just a different, it's pure white.
It's tough to explain to people sometimes because in their mind, and they believe it, they think the lights are actually brighter.
All right, thank you.
So taking all that, putting it into our, the proposed budget, the next slide shows the general governmental fund forecast. And what I'd like to to highlight is that in the very last column of 2627, we do meet the financial principles and financial policy of the the city. The financial policy of the city is 8% to 10%, but the principle that we like to follow is between 10 and 15. So right now we're just about 16. And then the other one is the net sources and uses. So the proposed budget for next fiscal year actually has a net positive of almost $8 million. And moving out, the, moving out, it does go negative. That is due to the correction that we do have in there in the forecast. So but even with that correction, we do still meet the 16%. So we do forecast for that, the the market correction in there.
So I understand you forecast accordingly to the economic conditions, but then we have a line item, future economic correction. So how does that differentiate?
So what we did for 2021, because we knew it was coming up, when we, what we did was we were able to set aside $10 million in fiscal year 2021. We set it aside, allocated it out. And that is for if we do have an economic correction that is deeper than what we are forecasting and the fund balance dips below that 8% to 10% of the financial policy, we're able to move that $10 million back into here to sustain our services. So that's kind of what it is.
Yeah, we did that before we knew what COVID was, right? We had this idea that things were going well and we set aside the 10 million because we were expecting it to be a correction, not a pandemic. And so that's, that's part of where we're carrying up to the budget. So it just feels like it's kind of our little, I'll call it cushion, but it just helps mitigate against, it gives a little bit of a run if there's, we see a big downturn, we've got that plugged into the budget across. Yeah, it is.
And I will take Butler, Miranda's here today, but I know that we've been talking, I've been talking to Miranda about the rental sales tax, and that could be a significant hit on Mesa if the legislature passes that. It's about a $17 million hit
At least.
to our general fund. So how do we, in the event that they do pass this, how, what is, how do we, what are we going to do?
Scream.
Scream.
We'll have to come back and do an adjustment. I mean, that's, that's obviously a significant hit. We would hope that that would not happen because I think across, it's 17 million for us, probably closer to 20. I've heard it's closer to $60 million for Phoenix. So obviously we'd have to come back and do some budget adjustments. Now, the good news is we're in a position right now with the way the economy is and our construction sales tax, we could absorb it, you know, for the maybe a year, but then we would have to start planning out into the future, you know, making adjustments to the budget for sure.
Okay. So everybody make sure you call your legislator and say? So everybody make sure you call your legislator and say, vote now.
So that's the General Governmental Fund, proposed budget and forecast. Moving on to the utility fund, just a reminder of we use similar principles of a balanced net sources and uses, a 20% or higher reserve balance. And also rate adjustments that are predictable and smooth throughout the forecast. And then also with the equity between residential and non-residential rates in keeping affordable services. So with meeting the, the growth in the southeast and, and also downtown and all the other districts, there's a tremendous amount of growth going on of, of housing and, and companies moving in to support that growth. The Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant expansion is going on. And what we've included was a treatment process specialist. Also with the central reused pipeline, we've added some staff for that, for that project, but also for the continuation of the, the monitoring of the, of the valves and the system itself. We've had some staff also with some equipment. And then we're also doing the work at the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant. I think it's been about 20 to 30 years since that has been, actually did a major renovation. So we're adding a water resource operator, but then also a maintenance specialist for that. And then also to support the growth in the solid waste accounts, we're bringing to relocate the solid waste trucks from the West Mesa Service Center to the East Service, East Mesa Service Center. So what's happening is with the growth of the, the southeast part of Mesa and all the accounts, instead of having all of the south, all of the solid waste trucks at West Mesa Service Center, we're looking to allocate some of those over to the East Mesa Service Center, which would help reduce windshield time and, and overtime and things like that. So that's what we're, we're looking to, to do with that.
We had to make a decision, at what point do we split the operations? You know, you don't really want to do that and separate the administration, but at the same time, the drive time for these trucks to get all the way back over to West Mesa doesn't make sense and they, with the loads and everything. So we are going to be exploring the option to split our operations, which when you think about the growth of the city, we need to do it, but it's going to, then of course you have to create some redundancy in some of the logistics for each of the sites. But we're big enough now that it's probably something we, well, we probably should have done it now, we're kind of forced to do it just to make, it makes sense, so.
So those are all included in the 2223 proposed budget for the utility fund. And this is the forecast that we have for the utility fund. For fiscal year, this coming up fiscal year 2223, we do have a, a fund balance percentage of over the, over the 20% that we're looking for. But throughout the forecast, as you notice, due to some of these, these big projects and the operations and maintenance coming onboard, but also it's due to the inflation. Everybody's getting hit with inflation and also being in the tier one water for prices, it has hit the utilities, especially water significantly. And so with that, we're down at 20 and 2627, we are at 7.4%. When we do this forecast, we kept the same rate adjustments that were presented to council in December. So we still do monitor this on a monthly and quarterly basis. So as we go, we're still monitoring the forecast. The current couple fiscal years are, are good, but we still monitor the outer years and we're still looking to see how those work out. And when we come back, we'll, towards year end, we'll get some more precise actual numbers for 2122, and then we just keep going. So we do monitor this on a monthly basis and to keep it, to keep it going.
So somewhere out through two, three years from now, we'll have to make an assessment about the rates that are currently shown for the forecast, but there may be a little bit of tweaking in order to take care of that fifth year. But things can change too and growth and cell of water. But it is, we don't like having that below 10% out there, but we weren't ready to change the rates either in the forecast. So we think we'll give it a couple more years and then make that adjustment if we need to.
Brian, I have a question on solid waste. We ended up on a positive flow for this year and with recycling being an issue in which we have huge losses, how do we do that? How did that come out?
The, so solid waste actually is projected for a, for this coming up fiscal year, projected for 7 million. That is a one-time for a, a one-time project that, that's budgeted. For 2223, with the, with the tipping fees and, and the management of environmental management, and I think Scott was.
Scott, what was the one time this year that?
I was looking at one.
No, it was, for the one time is the flare to fuel. So we have in the budget a, about $4 million for a flare to fuel project over at the Northwest.
Capturing the natural gas coming off, or the, the gases coming off of the methane coming out of the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. I guess I was looking at the 2021, which we've, is in past tense. Okay.
Yeah, but sometimes, especially with Scott, he'll have some large spike sometimes in his budget and so that'll impact it.
Yeah, when you see with solid waste, many times it's the trucks. So if we order, you know, eight or 10 trucks in one year, it will show a negative for that year because we are paying cash for all those trucks. And then in the following year, we may only have two trucks that we're ordering and at about a half a million dollars each for those trucks. It can make a significant difference. But we work with budget closely to make sure over the, the five or six years that we're looking, that we're replacing the trucks that we need, but we're also doing it in a way that the, the utility is still, you know, staying profitable.
So the fluctuation is more due to capital expenditures than it is than operations?
That was correct.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, as long as you're here to the point of recycling, in the last several months, haven't we seen kind of a flip flop on, on commodity prices for cardboard and things like that? Is there a reason to be optimistic that recycling will not be a losing proposition in the future?
Yeah, we are, Mayor, Council, we are definitely seeing increasing prices in the commodities. I think it's just part of the cycles that we've seen with recycling over the last couple of decades. There's, there's peaks and valleys that happen with it, with the economy and the need for all of these materials. You're seeing that they're more valuable now and there's more demand for them. And so we have definitely seen increases in commodity prices.
Mr. Freeman.
So Scott, how's our contamination rate with recyclables to, you know, offset some of those costs?
The contamination rate, so we have not done an audit in a couple of years since the Republic facility had burned down. We haven't done an audit. Right now, the contract that we have with United Fibers, which is in Chandler, we're just paying a flat rate that's about the equivalent of what it would be to landfill the material. So they haven't required us to do an audit lately. My staff, who's out on the streets every day flipping lids, you know, we, we see some areas that are better than others, but we definitely have been trying to work hard on public education. As I come back with our presentation, we'll have some updates on recycling and what we're doing, but staff is definitely out there trying to make sure that as we're ready to move forward with additional recycling, that it's clean material that's going to be delivered to those facilities.
Look forward to that, thanks.
Since we're talking about trash, I want to ask one more question. At one point when we're looking at recycling, we're considering doing a regional MRF, what are they, recycling facility? We would do our own sorting and pairing together with other East Valley cities. Is that still a consideration or a need in our operations?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, yes, so we have been working on a feasibility study. We've been working with engineering and a consultant on a feasibility study. We're very close. I am reviewing the final draft, myself and staff are reviewing a final draft right now and providing final, final comments to the consultant. And as part of our presentation, we'll be coming back. The one thing that you see was with that split fleet is part of the feasibility study. That was the recommendation for the first phase of moving forward is to split that fleet because there are a lot of operational efficiencies that come with the split fleet, simply because of all the growth that has happened in East Mesa and especially Southeast Mesa with our main location being here at Mesa Drive. It's a very, you know, it's almost an hour for an operator to get from the Mesa Drive location down to say Eastmark and then for them to come back to. We refer to that as deadhead time. It's just time that is, you know, not productive for them. Moving half of the operation or approximately half of the operation out to East Mesa will significantly reduce that deadhead time and provide us more time on route, which is that productive time for the operator.
So the teaser on the MRF is it's very expensive and we'll need partners and we'll go from there.
Mr. Reddy.
Changing topics here, and maybe this is a question for when we get to the discussion, but on electric, I know we, we, we put in many funds to help support, back up the rising costs on, on electric.
On the what?
On the electric piece.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
So I think we put 20 million, right, to help with the rising cost based on some of the, the issues on the, on buying electricity.
Oh, yes, yes.
Are we seeing any stabilizing or are, are we also, we, we, we working on?
Well, I'll have Frank speak to that. And I do think that, as I recall, Mr. Hirschberg, we were pleasantly surprised by what we were seeing coming in on the market most recently. So we're not seeing the same kind of spiky activity that we had before. Now, the $20 million we set aside was specifically to.
Help offset the resident.
Offset the residents' impact from previous, the previous spike. And we're halfway through that reimbursement, so, but, so that's different, but yes, and I think Frank can speak to that cost, but we have already had to go out and contract for some of that more recently and it has not, we haven't had the same experience we had before.
Okay.
So that is the proposed budget. The budget process calendar here, coming up next, as I mentioned, is all the department presentations that will fill your calendar for April. We will come back and do a budget wrap-up on May 5th. And then the tentative adoption for the annual budget will be May 16th, along with the adoption of the five-year capital improvement program. And then on June 6th is the, the final adoption, along with the secondary property tax levy. And then at the end of June, the secondary property tax levy will be for consideration for adoption. So with that, that ends the proposed budget presentation.
Great. Thank you, Brian.
And I, he's going to set up for another, one more presentation, but while he's doing that, Mayor and Council, just again, it's the, it's kind of, we call it April madness of budget. So, so we're going to use every Monday and Thursday through the month of April for budget presentations. So we'll, even Monday, we'll have an early start, probably 4:30. We'll bring transportation and transit forward and then we'll just go from there on the schedule, meeting with the departments, so. Go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Freeman. The, the next item on our agenda is a presentation on the non-utility projects, including the capital improvement programs. And I'll just begin by complimenting you on the beautiful picture of the newly renovated old Mesa Library, now the, the studios. It's beautiful.
So thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is a, a presentation on the non-utility capital improvement program. So it includes all the, the general capital, all the departments, streets also, other than the utilities. So with that, this is the program for '23 through '27. However, the budget, just a reminder, the budget that gets adopted is only a one-year budget of fiscal year 2223. So this is just the plan of what we foresee for the next five years. So what we'll do is review the current bond authorizations, some active projects that are going on, plus the potential general obligation or geo-bond projects and then the next steps for the CIP. So just as a refresher on funding sources, we do use local revenue sales tax, some regional awards and grants such as MAG. And then also, as I mentioned, the general obligation bonds, but then also excise tax obligations, which uses the sales tax. So what we also look for is in doing capital projects is the operations and maintenance, because this is big, because the capital projects is just a one-time expense. However, to maintain those, some of those facilities and streets and things like that that we do construct, we do have ongoing operation and maintenance costs that we do review throughout and budget for it to meet the operational needs. Some examples are for staffing a new fire station or library, but then also kind of landscaping, maintenance in city parks and even on streets from some of the medians and things like that. Some of the current projects, just to review some of the current projects that were completed this fiscal year, '21, '22, is Fire Station 221, the main library, they had a children's room that was completed. Also, the Mesa Public Safety Training Facility Drivetrack was completed. And then as the, as the picture shows, the, the studios at City Center Phase 1 was completed. And then also the McDowell Overpass enhancements and then Monterey Park renovations, that was all. So these are just some of the highlights of the, of projects that were completed through this fiscal year. So moving forward, just to show you some of the, the financials of it. So with the budget of '21, '22 and then some of the actuals of '21, '22, so we budgeted 130 million, we're about halfway spent on that through the actuals. As you know, construction can go up and down of, depending on when it happens. So we're about halfway through on the budget. So the proposed budget for next fiscal year is about 148 million. What's included in that is mostly the general obligation bonds, but also some joint ventures, grants and local revenues. So looking out for the five-year, we're looking, just a plan is the 430, 436 million. But what we're focusing on for next fiscal year for the proposed budget is the 148 in projects. So the status, kind of give you a status of the 2018 and 2020 general obligation bonds. So just to kind of review, when we issued, what the authorized, what the voters authorized was 111 million in parks and culture, public safety was 85. And then just two years ago, transportation was the 100, the 100 million. And some of those projects that are going, that are underway under those bond authorizations for parks and culture, one is the, the plaza at City Center, also some of the solar parking improvements, Dobson Library improvements, the Lehigh Sports Park, the, another, the kind of phase two of the Monterey Park expansion. And then also the Post, the historic post office, along with the Pallaverty Playground and Red Mountain Expansion. And then on the public safety side, we're purchasing replacements for some of the fire apparatuses. Also, the police evidence building is underway and also the Northeast Public Safety Facility. So those are some of the ones that are under the 2018 bond authorizations. Under the 2020 transportation bond authorization, most of these are in design, but however, they are moving forwards, the Broadway Road Corridor, the Signal Butte Road improvements, also some Sossman and Baseline Project with Valvista from Pueblo to US 60. Those are some of the projects that are underway that are in design. We wanted to highlight on the next slide, some of the general capital funded. These are both general capital, but some of them are, are ARPA-funded. So this is coming out of the, the general capital fund of kind of, kind of the cash, the one-time cash savings that the city is, that the city has. So ARPA-funded property acquisition for a restaurant incubator, also the studios at City Center Phase 2, the Mesa City Plaza Council Chambers, along with the Real-Time Crime Center and the Mesa Family Advocacy Center. These projects are all kind of underway.
So Mayor and Council, what that really, what means for you all and private constituents is all these projects are either funded by federal dollars or by general fund dollars. So there's no required debt. This is not associated with any debt to build out these capital projects.
That's pretty remarkable, if you think about it. Mr. Freeman.
So Mr. Brady, where are we at on the Valvista water line that we're going to run for the GRIK? Is that part of the?
So that will come up in the, when we get to the utility. This is the non-utility CIP, but we'll, we'll bring, we'll have a discussion on that when we get to the utility CIP.
So moving on, kind of just to recap, because I know this was presented at the council strategic plan, was potential 2022 general obligation bond projects. And this is just to recap those projects. So for fire and medical would be two fire stations, 2023 and 24. Then also in Station 205 would be a demo and rebuild. And then also is included in that would be a remodel or relocation or of the fire and medical headquarters. And then for police in there would be the renovation of the police headquarters. And then also for both of them would be the public safety side is the public safety training facility of, of redoing some of the public safety training facility for both of them.
So Mayor and Council, I think we've, if we're all in agreement, we've settled on this is the list of projects. We've got to go back and refine the cost estimates so we can tell you the sizing of the bond that we would propose in November, but. the bond that we would propose in November, but we'll probably be coming back to in three or four weeks, unless someone else, you know, comes up with another project. Right now, we're going to focus on this list as a public safety bond program for 2022, and again, we'll come back with the total estimated amount. And we, that's important, too, because not only will it talk about how impacts, you know, future secondary property tax, but it just kind of limits about, you know, what we can spend on these, overall, these projects. So, that will be coming, but it, I just want to, I guess, looking for one more nod from everyone, that this is kind of the list, we don't, we don't, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things we'd like to do, but we think this is the one we could focus on next for this November election, so.
So, that is an overview of the CIP program. So, the next steps, as mentioned, on April 14th, we'll, I'll come back with the utility CIP budget review, and that would include kind of all the utility-type projects of the Mesa reuse pipeline and things like that, along with that day, that same day is the utility water and, and energy resources. They will come and present their budgets on that day. And then, April 30th would be a public notice for the improvement program, and then on May 16th, mentioned before, that's when it would be the public hearing, and then on for, and for the adoption, council consideration, and then on June 20th would be the secondary property tax levy.
And Mayor and Council, I'll just share with you now, we'll bring more details. We are looking at proposing a decrease in the tax levy for the median home in Mesa, so that'll be significant. So, we're working on all, finalizing all that. There's, I guess, a little bit in the summary of the budget, but we'll bring all that detail to you in the near future. But the good news is, we do think there, we're in a position with all the growth we've had, plus just trying to spend money as fast as we thought. We haven't been able to spend a lot of the money, some of the money as fast as we thought, so a combination of those and a change in our philosophy of how we, well, what our limitations are for how, what we can spend, or how much we can hold in reserves, I should say that, for our secondary property tax debt, has allowed us to find a way to reduce the levy for the average home, median home over the next couple of years. So, we'll bring, bringing that to you also.
So, just a reminder also attached to the presentation in Legistar was the, the proposed budget council report. That does go into detail of a lot of the things that I just presented as kind of an overview, but that report is, has a little more detail into it that some of the departments that we're presenting will include some of those items, too. So, just wanted to give you that reminder.
Thank you. That's a good kickoff for the April month of budget. Look forward, I'm sure we'll...
Do we get brackets or anything?
We could do that. That's a great idea. April madness, we have to figure out who's going to win.
We could see, like, which one's going to be at the top.
Public safety. I'm going with the public safety.
My final four would be police and fire. All right, thank you very much. Moving on with our agenda, then, item 3A is to acknowledge receipts of minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Ms. Spilsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Council members, would you like to share things? Mr. Luna?
I, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday, I remember, but I, I appeared on Telemundo encouraging some of our Spanish-speaking community members to encourage to apply for our boards and committee. Hopefully, we'll get more representation from the Hispanic community, so I was very excited about that. Also, I just wanted to alert our community, especially on Brown Road, this weekend's going to be very busy and congested. We have Tour de Mesa, plus we have Free Our Run by Red Mountain High School, so everyone's going to be parking at the high school, and there could be a lot of congestion. Just be careful if you drive early morning in that area, some, like you said, Mr. Brady, a lot of events, which is good for our city, because we want to encourage these kind of activities, so it should be a very exciting time in East Mesa and things throughout the city, and so, but just be careful when you're driving along Red Mountain High School in that area. The other thing I wanted to, tomorrow is April 1st, it says Chavez's birthday. He is one of our heroes, and we appreciate what he's done for our farm workers, and because of his efforts, we, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to support what he's done and what he represents to the Hispanic community. And he was born near where Councilmember Edie is from, so, from Yuma, so we certainly want to honor him tomorrow for that. And there's a little video that's going to be put on social media reflecting that, so that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, C.C. Point A.
One more thing, I did meet with the National American Fatherhood and Family Association yesterday. Great meeting, what they're doing with our Native American communities. They're located here in Mesa. I know many of you are going to, are going to a tour and have been on a tour, and so they do remarkable work with our Native American communities, not only in Mesa, but they're out nationally as well, and so it was a great meeting that I had yesterday, and I would encourage you all to, to celebrate what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spilsbury.
Two of our Mesa Public Schools' elementaries got the A-plus School of Excellence Award, and so, Pomeroy in Frinkey's District, I got to go help them celebrate that award, and the other one is Jefferson. So, I just wanted to, yeah, give a shout-out. That's a really great honor and recognition, and strong schools help build strong neighborhoods, so I just think it's really great to celebrate those accomplishments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I kind of have a long list, but last Thursday, I had the honor of emceeing the Athena Awards, which recognizes women leaders and their mentees, and many of our women from the city of Mesa are there. Mesa PD Fiesta Commander Deraven was there, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Williams, Tara Hall, Minnie, and another woman that I forgot her name, Councilmember Spilsbury was there, Melissa Rendazzo, and my assistant, and that was a really great event, and I appreciate Mesa being involved in that. Friday evening, I attended the Better Block Demonstration at Guerrero Park. It's an incredible event to experience how we can use our parks and streets differently with community-led projects and creativity, and thank you to Kristin Nightengel and the community members for the tireless work to make it as possible. It was last Friday evening to Saturday afternoon. On Sunday afternoon, I attended the Indian Classical Dance Festival at Mesa Arts Center. I know the mayor attended on Saturday, and it was a wonderful glimpse of the storytelling of their culture through dance. And just wanted to make a side note on my experience there, it's an incredible cultural experience, but now, as councilmembers, sometimes we attend many events to, you know, to support the work that they do and acknowledge it, but since today is the last day of Women's History Month, I have to share the story of a little 12-year-old girl who came up to me, and she says, "Can I have your, my picture with you?" And I said, "Okay, you want a picture?" And she goes, "You're a woman mayor." I go, "Well, vice mayor, I just want a picture with a woman mayor." I said, "Well, vice mayor, but thank you." And, but it just made me recognize our role as, as women, being able to be seen in leadership roles, and how important it is to future generations. I just didn't want to shout-out for that, since it's the last day of Women's History Month.
Jen, we should probably mention, you won an award at the Athena of Valley.
Oh, one of the founders who were being a woman with the leadership principles and values of the Athena Institution. It was, it was, yeah, it was...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well-deserved.
And I don't know if someone's going to cover the ASU Poly tomorrow, maybe councilmember make that mention on Monday, and our employee service awards.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I feel like I'm going on too long. Go ahead.
Well, I just want to thank Police and Fire. We had a block party up in my district, and we had about 400 people there, and it was a great time, and it's over in the Friendly Cove and Forest Knoll neighborhood, and been to several ribbon cuttings and some of the events you've listed, so thank you very much.
Mr. Thompson.
Just so the, everyone knows this, R24 is going to be opening this week.
Oh, excellent.
Friday at noon, at least to Williamsville Road, so that'll free up a lot of the traffic coming.
This is a heads-up to everybody who's been riding their bikes on it.
There's a lot of bike riders out there, so they need a... Yeah, so, yeah, if you're riding your bike, please don't ride it, starting noon on Friday on the 24th, because it will be open to traffic.
Great. Okay, let me, I'll back clean up here. Some of the stuff that the Vice Mayor mentioned, we had a wonderful employee service award breakfast, was it yesterday? We haven't been able to convene for a year or two because of COVID, but we are so proud of our City of Mesa employees. We are, the talent and the competency of this organization just always amazes me, so we just want to continually express our appreciation for the really, the tremendous value that we have in our workforce, so that was fun to do that. It was also mentioned that we recently toured ASU Poly. I think most of us were there a few days ago. Amazing to see the growth there. There are 7,000 students, shortly will be at 15,000 students. Huge investments are taking place out there. A new $200 million building is on its way for advanced manufacturing that will support a lot of the chip-making and other advanced, high-end manufacturing that we're seeing out in the southeast part of our, of the valley and of the city. I want to mention again, the Indian Dance Event that the Vice Mayor was at. I was there the day before, and again, it was a wonderful focus, this were, I think it was entirely female dance troupe.
The Ten Goddesses, yes.
The Ten Goddesses, it was, so it was, it was a wonderful celebration of Women's Month, but also, they raised over $100,000 for that event. That is, was donated to charity, and a lot of it went to Ukraine, but a lot of it stayed here locally as well, so that's not every day you have a $100,000 fundraiser in your community that is given entirely to charitable events, so congratulations to them. I went to a ribbon cutting that I thought was very noteworthy last week. Alverno College is a new, it's a Catholic university from, I think, I want to say Milwaukee, and they specialize in nursing, and so the program, and it's at the bank building at, you know, Southern and Alma School, occupies an entire floor there, but they specialize in folks who maybe already have a bachelor's degree in something else, but they want to get into nursing. You can enroll in that program, and they'll give you a BSN in a short period of time, or a master's degree in nursing, so, you know, people that kind of may, maybe want to make midlife career changes into nursing. And the reason I, I thought that I was so impressed by this is, number one, it's a very high-quality Catholic education, but we were experiencing a severe nursing shortage in Mesa, Arizona, right now. If you talk to any of our healthcare providers, the limiting, limitations we have on, on healthcare is not beds, it's staffing. So, if you know anyone who wants to become a nurse, you know, there are more options in Mesa now, particularly folks that maybe aren't, you know, 20 years old, but are thinking about making a career change, this is a really, I encourage you to Google Alverno College, because they're up and running and doing a great job in Mesa. Mr. Luna reminded me that he and I were at the Boeing Family Day on Saturday, which was a great event. Again, I think all the Boeing family folks haven't been able to come out and see where Mom and Dad worked for the last few years, so this, that was a lot of fun. And then also, over, on, over the weekend, I attended a downtown interfaith service at the First United Methodist Church, and it was really just a very sweet and wonderful event. It included a, an Iman and a Buddhist monk, and several Christian faith leaders, but just a very heartwarming event, and I appreciate all that with the work that went into that event. And I appreciate Mr. Luna mentioning Caesar Chavez Day.
It's actually today, Mayor. Anna corrected me, she goes, "No, it's today."
That's great. Well, C.C. Puerta, that's important for all of us to acknowledge the significance of that, of Mr. Chavez, who was born in Arizona. Anything else we'd like to share, Council? Mr. Thompson?
Just real quick, and to your point on the nursing shortage, there is state legislation out there right now that allows military, people that are getting out of the military that may have a nursing license, or may have, be a nurse, or something along those lines in the military, can translate that military experience to a RN licensing, and come out of the military with the, basically with the license to go right into the workforce.
Sounds like a good idea. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, you know what's coming, so we're going to start Monday. We'll review the council agenda, but the study session will include presentations from transportation transit, so we'll start, an early start at 4:30 on Monday. Okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you.